Welcome to Live Learning, a teaching October 2nd combined meeting. Roll call please, Mr. Merkley. Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Mr. Serrano?
Present.
Mr. Silve?
Here.
Mr. Spinnelli?
Yes.
Mr. Olrich?
Present.
Here.
The point of the New Jersey Sun- New Jersey Public Game will accommodate the Sunshine Law of Climate Education as caused by Louis' proposed enormous meeting and consent to follow on announced in time and place, air, light, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, Press of Atlantic City, U.S. Republic, Dad, Mr. Bueno, the clerk of City of Biden, and the administrative office of public political. At this time, please rise with the flag, see the US, and the United States, and the people who are serving us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless, for all.
Uh, well, we have to, uh, still, we may, I think, to do some things. Thank you. Thank you, students. Mr. Merkley, we have a resolution for a session this evening. That's good. Now, therefore, we resolve a court of decision of City of Biden, who will be in a technical session on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019, following the dot line in the ASI, technical four dash twelve. Discussions about passive negotiations, employment matters, pending matters filed within the attorney's prime purposes to extend the confidentiality required in order to earn exercise in the court of justice. Does that motion? So moved, thank you. Roll call please. Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Spinnelli?
Yes.
Mr. Olrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes. At this time, public comment from our board solicitor. I did talk to Mr. Santu earlier, just concerning about a portion in our meeting where the, the public comes up and they really want to hear answers from the board, but I just wanted to let the public know why we cannot engage in conversation.
Okay. As the board knows, the day-to-day operations are supervised by the superintendent and implemented by central office and building administrators. Under DOE Code of Ethics, the board is required to submit to the superintendent any concerns, complaints, comments from the public, even if they come here in public session. So no matter what the source is, whether they call you on the phone, or see you at the supermarket, or bring it up at a public meeting here, those concerns and comments and complaints have to be referred to administration. I wanted to mention that prior to 2008, this Board of Education permitted public comment at meetings. They weren't required to, but the board permitted it. Then in 2008, the Sunshine Law was amended to require public comment. And I want to make it clear that under the Sunshine Law, a school board or council, municipal council, is required to set aside a portion of every meeting of the governing body or board for public comment on any school district or government issue that a member of the public feels may be a concern to residents of the municipality. The Supreme Court of New Jersey in 2010 held that the public is permitted a time to make comments on any issues of concern they may have. However, the board is not required to answer questions or engage in dialogue with the public. This is a time for the public to air grievances or concerns to the board. That's the New Jersey Supreme Court speaking. So as I mentioned earlier, if the public comes up and makes a comment, has a grievance, a complaint, a concern, the board will hear it, and then the matter is referred to administration for follow-up.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, thank you. Do we have committee, any committee reports at this time?
Scott, the Policy and Personnel Committee did meet. If you give me a minute, I can bring up the minutes.
No problem.
Transportation.
Transportation.
I'm ready.
Ready?
Yep. Okay, on September 25th, at 4:30 PM, the Policy and Personnel Committee did meet. Present were myself, Mr. Serrano, Mr. English, Mr. Holmes, Dr. Rossi, Dr. Guccio, and Mr. Merkley. We discussed our procedure and policy concerning school lunches. There was a question forwarded by a board member, Ms. Spinnelli, and the district received a response from Sedesco on what their structure for free and reduced lunch was. We also talked about, Mr. Merkley presented a transportation department reorganization that was actually just gonna slide some people around, hire some bus drivers, and address the future retirement of our Director of Transportation. We are awaiting a legal opinion from legal counsel, which we received tonight regarding a teacher in executive session by our counsel, Nicole Curia. We also discussed a, discussed a secretarial assistant posting due to her retirement for Dr. Sneetham, which was approved to go forward, and we are gonna hear from Lieutenant Colonel William Spence tonight, hopefully after he's approved by the board on accepting the lead position in our ROTC program. We talked about, this was a long meeting, we talked about some audiovisual reorganization in our departments to supply Gina with some additional resources. Athletic director and principal org chart relationships reporting structure, which was changed, and the athletic director is going to report to Mr. Fry. We discussed non-certificated supervisors contract, which is before the board tonight for approval, and Dr. Sneetham's start date was revived from, revised from October 7th to October 8th because of a personal matter she had to attend to on the 7th. And that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Olrich. Do we have any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. English. The Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, September 24th at 4 o'clock PM. Present were myself, Ms. Spinnelli, Mr. English, Mr. Serrano, Mr. Merkley, Mr. Hall, and Ms. Ferrari. We reviewed registration data for summer in early September. We also reviewed bus routes and drivers last year and the new year. We started discussion on some of the first day of school, first weeks of school issues with busing and registration. We reviewed proposing transportation and registration organizational structure, the roles and responsibilities, and the staffing structure. We also discussed the saving results from bringing violent routes and contracted routes from Shepherd in our school district. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 5th, pending no emergent items.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. That was a good meeting as well, very informative. Do we have any other committee reports this evening? At this time, we have public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any this evening?
I did not get any yellow forms, but there'll be additional public comment at the end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. At this time, motion and resolutions from our superintendent, Dr. Guccio?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to recommend discussion of personnel items 1.1 through 1.2, resignations, retirements, terminations, lease of absence, employment transfers, student substitutes, extracurricular activities, and extracurricular summer. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I read the whole thing, yeah.
Any questions or comments?
I recommend approval of personnel items 1.1, A through E.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please. Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. English? Yes. At this time, public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any this evening?
I did not get any yellow forms, but there'll be additional public comment at the end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. At this time, motion and resolutions from our superintendent, Dr. Guccio?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to recommend discussion of personnel items 1.1 through 1.2, resignations, retirements, terminations, lease of absence, employment transfers, student substitutes, extracurricular activities, and extracurricular summer. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I read the whole thing, yeah.
Any questions or comments?
I recommend approval of personnel items 1.1, A through E.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please. Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Spinnelli?
Yes.
Mr. Olrich?
Yes.
Mr. English? Yes.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Lieutenant Colonel William Spence, and I invite you to say a few words if you would like. Welcome to our district.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be here at school. I actually fell in love when I drove up to this building. This is a beautiful facility. I had the honor of knowing the previous Sassy, which is the Senior Aerospace Science Instructor, the fancy name for what I'll be doing, Major Simpson. I've got the, I was able to meet him over three years in a row at Fort Dix, McGuire Air Force Base, when we had the cadet leadership summer training there with the Violin Cadets. And he always struck me as a pretty straight-up guy, and I always liked the cadets from Violin, and now that I'm down here, gonna be part of this program, I couldn't be happier. It's, it's a really nice program. I met the ASI the other day, and, and the sergeant's doing a great job, and you have a beautiful facility. I was just completely blown away by it. So I'm just glad to be part of the family. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to recommend discussion of the 2019-2022 Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement with the Non-Certificated Supervisors Association, which contains contractual language changes to health benefits waiver, sick day buyout provisions, minimum and maximum salary ranges, and salary increases according to the following schedule. 2019-20, 2.3 percent; 2020-21, 2.4 percent; and 2021-22, 2.5 percent.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend approval of the 2019-22 Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement with the Non-Certificated Supervisors Association.
Do you have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call please. Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinnelli?
Yes.
Mr. Olrich?
Yes.
Mr. English? Yes.
I'd like to recommend discussion of trips and district travel, springs and spring boys' baseball training schedule for 2020.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend approval of trips and district travel and spring boys' baseball training for 2020.
No.
I could read them both if you want, usually we read each one.
And then I'll do the, okay. Read two.
Right, then, okay.
And then move to the next one.
Okay, fine. Discussion of the following board and chief school administrator district goals for the 2019-20 school year.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I reviewed the district goals, the board district goals, and I really feel that we should table this. I'm not really happy with the goals that, the way they're written, and I would like to have the opportunity to kind of work on the goals along with my fellow board members to make them more student-centered, and perhaps vote on them at the next meeting.
That would require, um...
Right now, it's just discussion. If the superintendent wants to withdraw that, then there's no need, there's no need to table this, there's no motion right now.
There's no need to table right this moment because there's no motion. So if the superintendent wanted to withdraw that or defer that, then she can just do so, and you'll only vote on 2.1 in a motion.
About my goals in the district. Now, your goals.
I believe, Ms. Costa, when we spoke, you, you were fine with the goals that Dr. Guccio had, but it was the district goals, um...
It wasn't the district goals, it was the board goals.
The board goals.
That's my only concern. I'd just like an opportunity for the, to revise the board goals, not the district goals.
I'll do whatever the board is comfortable with, I just want to make sure that if we do pull them, that we follow through quickly because we're going through a full CUSAC review, and I don't want us to lose points for that.
Absolutely, and I don't have a problem with approving the district goals if you'd like to do that tonight, and then we can do the board goals.
So just make it clear that your recommendation for discussion and then later approval would be the district goal only, not the board goals.
Does anybody have any questions or comments here? I do thank you, Ms. Costa, because we had some discussion amongst board members, and although we sat in our retreat and we agreed on our board goals, we also felt that they were kind of generic and kind of goals that should be happening anyway in the daily operation type thing that we do. So are your thoughts maybe putting a committee together to try and, I don't believe, I don't think, it was hard enough to get the board together for a retreat, let alone...
My, my thought was perhaps we can get, I mean, I'd be happy to volunteer to be part of the committee, and I believe, I've spoken to Mr. Silva, and he's volunteered as well. If anyone else is interested in working on the goals with Alex and I, I'd be, you know, we would certainly welcome.
I'm willing to participate.
Does this need to be, Bob, an ad hoc committee type thing I have to set up then?
Yeah.
And, but it's gotta be an ad hoc committee in a fast type of way.
Absolutely.
Almost in the same way as we got together for the superintendent evaluation, how it's, it's takes a commitment, but what I would like to do is, if each board member, I have no problem putting an ad hoc committee tonight, and I will have you chair the ad hoc committee, but what I would like for each board member to do, if they can...
Ms. Spinelli, Mr. English, Mr. Sabran, and Mr. Merkley, Mr. Hall, and Ms. Ferrari. We reviewed registration data for summer in early September. We also reviewed bus routes and drivers last year and the new year. We started a discussion on some of the first day of school, first weeks of school issues with busing and registration. We reviewed proposing transportation and registration organizational structure, the roles and responsibilities, and the staffing structure. We also discussed the saving results from bringing Vinland routes and contracted routes from Shepherd in our school district. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 5th, pending no emergent items.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. That was a good meeting as well, very informative. Do we have any other committee reports this evening? At this time, we have public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any this evening?
I did not get any yellow forms, but there'll be additional public comment at the end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. At this time, motion and resolutions from our superintendent, Dr. Gruccio.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend discussion of personnel items 1.1 through 1.2, resignations, retirements, terminations, lease of absence, employment transfers, student substitutes, extracurricular activities, and extracurricular summer. Yes?
I think we had 1.1 A through E.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I read the whole thing, yeah.
Any questions or comments?
I recommend approval of personnel items 1.1 A through E.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabran?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Lieutenant Colonel William Spence, and I invite you to say a few words if you would like. Welcome to our district.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be here at school. I actually fell in love when I drove up to this building. This is a beautiful facility. I had the honor of knowing the previous SASE, which is the Senior Aerospace Science Instructor, the fancy name for what I'll be doing, Major Simpson. I've got the, I was able to meet him over three years in a row at Fort Dix McGuire Air Force Base when we had the cadet leadership summer training there with the Vinland cadets. And he always struck me as a pretty straight-up guy, and I always liked the cadets from Vinland. And now that I'm down here, going to be part of this program, I couldn't be happier. It's a really nice program. I met the ASI the other day, and the sergeant's doing a great job. And you have a beautiful facility. I was just completely blown away by it. So I'm just glad to be part of the family. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to recommend discussion of the 2019-2022 Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement with the Non-Certificated Supervisors Association, which contains contractual language changes to health benefits waivers, sick day buyout provisions, minimum and maximum salary ranges, and salary increases according to the following schedule: 2019-20, 2.3 percent; 2020-21, 2.4 percent; and 2021-22, 2.5 percent.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend approval of the 2019-22 Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement with the Non-Certificated Supervisors Association.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabran?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
That passes.
I'd like to recommend discussion of trips and district travel, springs and spring boys' baseball training schedule for 2020.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend approval of trips and district travel and spring boys' baseball training for 2020. I could read them both if you want. Usually we read each one. And then I'll do the, okay. Right, then, okay. Okay, fine. Discussion of the following board and chief school administrator district goals for the 2019-20 school year.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I reviewed the district goals, the board district goals, and I really feel that we should table this. I'm not really happy with the goals that, the way they're written. And I would like to have the opportunity to kind of work on the goals along with my fellow board members, to make them more student-centered, and perhaps vote on them at the next meeting.
That would require...
Right now, it's just discussion. If the superintendent wants to withdraw that, then there's no need, there's no need to table this. There's no motion right now.
There's no need to table right this moment because there's no motion. So if the superintendent wanted to withdraw that or defer that, then she can just do so, and you'll only vote on 2.1 in a motion.
Now, your goals?
I believe, Ms. Costa, when we spoke, you were fine with the goals that Dr. Gruccio had. But it was the district goals...
It wasn't the district goals, it was the board goals.
The board goals.
That's my only concern. I'd just like an opportunity for the, to revise the board goals, not the district goals. I'll do whatever the board is comfortable with. I just want to make sure that if we do pull them, that we follow through quickly because we're going through a full CUSAC review, and I don't want us to lose points. Absolutely. And I don't have a problem with approving the district goals if you'd like to do that tonight, and then we can do the board goals.
So just make it clear that your recommendation for discussion and then later approval would be the district goal only, not the board goals.
Does anybody have any questions or comments here? I do thank you, Ms. Costa, because we had some discussion amongst board members, and although we sat in our retreat and we agreed on our board goals, we also felt that they were kind of generic and kind of goals that should be happening anyway in the daily operation type thing that we do. So are your thoughts maybe putting a committee together to try and, I don't believe, I don't think, it was hard enough to get the board together for a retreat, let alone...
My, my thought was perhaps we can get, I mean, I'd be happy to volunteer to be part of the committee, and I believe, I've spoken to Mr. Silva, and he's volunteered as well. If anyone else is interested in working on the goals with Alex and I, I'd be, you know, we would certainly welcome.
I'm willing to participate.
Does this need to be, Bob, an ad hoc committee-type thing I have to set up then?
Yeah.
And, but it's got to be an ad hoc committee in a fast type of way.
Absolutely.
Almost in the same way as we got together for the superintendent evaluation, how it's, it takes a commitment. What I would like to do is, if each board member, I have no problem putting an ad hoc committee tonight, and I will have you chair the ad hoc committee. But what I would like for each board member to do, if they can really give three to five solid board goals, get them to, Ms. Costa, copy me on them so we are aware of it. But as of now, Will, you can chair the committee. I have Mr. Silva, I have Mr. Sabran on that, and then I can ex officio in there unless somebody would like to go in my place.
Do you have to have school boards involved?
No.
No. Okay.
If I can presume what you're thinking, you want a little more meat to these goals, a little more detail.
That's correct.
Not necessarily an operational plan, but something a little, with a little more narrow focus about what we ought to be doing. It's good to say we want to improve communications. Well, how, and with what, and where the resource is going to come from, and who's going to do, who's going to do it, more importantly.
Correct. I mean, how do you measure goals when? It's difficult to measure these goals. They're just like generic statements, and anyone can say, gee, I want to improve education. Well, you know, everybody wants that, but we're not really discussing how we want to do that. And I think that, again, they have to be more student-centered, and there has to be, it has to be measurable in some way, shape, or form, and I just think that we can do a much better job.
Well, and how tight of a timeline are we going to be dealing with here?
We're going to be affected by CUSAC. We'll be affected by CUSAC also if we don't get it in by the CUSAC review, and we've already taken a hit for the last superintendent's evaluation, not this one.
I wouldn't want to wait that long either. I'd want to do it, like, right away.
Right. I know that we are meeting for curriculum and technology. We can have an extra-long meeting if you guys don't mind, and that we're scheduled next week to meet.
Picking back on...
Exactly.
I have, I have no problem, but just keep in mind, we all know the retreat structure, and we all sat in that retreat, and the goal of a retreat is to get it all out on the table then. And the one thing I am happy about, I was not happy with the way the retreat ended up, but I was happy about the discussion we had after because I wasn't the only one that felt that way. So that is why we're having this discussion now. So realistically, just for future boards as well, when it comes to those retreats, it's not, they're not really optional. They are mandatory, and the sooner the better. I know we tried to get together over the summer, and you need all nine board members there because it's, it's the way we do business.
Absolutely.
But I thank you for bringing this to the attention of both Dr. Gruccio, myself, and the rest of the board because we, I don't think anybody was happy with the lack of meat and potatoes that were on that plate. So we will deal with it accordingly. But just please email INES directly if you're not on that committee. That way, you're still part of that process, because that's one thing New Jersey School Boards does stress, that we do it collectively.
Right. And then once we come up with, you know, goals that I, that we all feel that are acceptable, then we'll forward it to everyone so that everyone can review it and give any other comments or suggestions.
If I could, and this is just a suggestion, I think part of what happened at the end of the retreat is it was getting late, people are tired, and she tried to wrap it up. So I'm just a little concerned at, to add it on to curriculum. I think, this is just my opinion, that it should be fresh. We should deal with just what we're dealing with about the goals. That's just my personal opinion. But however the board feels is...
I mean, I'm happy. I don't know if anyone's available on Monday. I'm available. Monday at 4:30. Unfortunately, I work till 4:00, 4:30.
Is Monday?
Yeah.
Is it Monday?
No, it's Tuesday. Is it Tuesday, Mr. Frye?
I believe it's the 7th.
Tuesday. It's Tuesday at 4:30, so we could work on our goals on Monday. You, okay. How about Wednesday?
What, what we can do, what we can do is, just...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Why don't you just put off the curriculum agenda until the next curriculum meeting? Since this is a little more important.
Mr. Frye, do we have anything on that curriculum agenda that is pushing?
We have some.
Okay, here's what we're going to do.
So I'll tell, but you're not going to change the curriculum.
Here's, here's, here's what we're going to do, guys. You know, just realistically, what we usually do is, the chair of the committee throws a couple dates out there. The general consensus rules, okay, it's Thursday, the 11th, 4 o'clock in the board conference room, bam. We can start it without someone. If somebody rolls in at 4:30, that's, that's fine. The key thing is, let's get that email out, and then get some of the ideas back because we'll, I don't want to meet if we haven't heard from five other board members either. So...
Right.
You'll put that email together.
Yes.
You know your committee members, and that is called the, what is the name of this committee?
It's an ad hoc, goal-setting, board-goal-setting ad hoc committee.
Board-goal committee. Perfect, perfect. Now...
Mr., Mr. English, may I just remind the board that they're to submit their suggestions to Ms. Costa, one-on-one.
Yes.
And not to be shared or discussed among themselves.
Absolutely. Thank you. What is the motion on the table for Dr. Gruccio to raise?
I think that I'm, I think that I am recommending approval of items 2.1 and 2.2 with the elimination of board goals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabran?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Passes.
I would like to recommend discussion of budgetary transfers for the general school base and ECPA budgets for July 2019 and August 2019.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the board secretary and treasurer reports for July 2019.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the board secretary and treasurer reports for August 2019.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the placement of special education students.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following changes in signers for the Kashmir Delago preschool student activity account: Melissa Hanningham-Pater, Michelle Bochetti, Cheryl Armstrong, and Jean Merkley.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the following updates and changes in signers for many's event account at the Newfield Bank. Remove all except Kristen Speakman. Add Melanie Lovissoni. Add Maria Panzino. And add Jean Merkley.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding submission of the following grant application: the American Theater Wing and Andrew Lloyd Webber Initiative through the Vinland Public Schools for Vinland High School in the amount of $41,994.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion that the board approve acceptance of funding of the following donation as provided on file with the secretary of the board: Kohl's Department Store, the benefit, am I saying it right?
Benevity.
Okay, Benevity Community Impact Fund through the Vinland Public Schools in the amount of $465. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the authorizing of the board secretary to enter into a commitment with the Adelante Junto's Forward Together Grant proposed by Rowan College of South Jersey National Science Foundation's Improving Undergraduate STEM Education for Hispanic Serving Institutions Program.
Questions or comments?
A question. Is this a proposal that we're submitting for a grant, or? Or is it, have we been, or?
Is, is this an NSF grant? We, we don't know that we're going to get this grant. It's a very big grant, it's over $2 million. But they would like the three major schools in Cumberland County to be a part of it if they do receive the money. So we have to always get board approval first for us to be a part of the grant, and it would be nice if we get it, but we won't know for a little while yet.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the memorandum of understanding between the Rowan University College of Education and Vinland Public Schools De Polito Elementary School for the 2019-20 school year.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the health care staffing agreement between Vinland Board of Education and Starlight Home Care Agency Incorporated to provide licensed practical nurses at $45 per hour and registered nurses at $55 an hour for special education students in a form acceptable to the board solicitor and superintendent for September 4th, 2019 through June 30th, 2020.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion regarding the 2019-20 Joint Transportation Agreement between Melville, Melville Public Schools and the Vinland Board of Education at no cost.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of contract renewals with Shepherd Bus Service from September 2019 to June 2020: the 21st Century Carrera Comm Christian and the VPS 2018-19.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of these Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation Initiatives: the Transportation Jointure, Transportation Quoted Contracts, and Transportation Addenda.
Questions or comments?
I would like to recommend approval of items 4.1 through 4.14.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabran?
Yes, on everything except abstain on item 4.10.
Noted. Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
I'm going to vote yes on everything except no on 4.13, renewal of Shepherd bus contracts.
Noted. Mr. English?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you. At this time, under 10B, proposed, proposed items for review or discussion or adoption by board members. We have the discussion and approval of a motion authorized. The board solicitors submit a request for an opinion to the New Jersey School Ethics Commission regarding possible board member conflicts relating to the future employment of relatives of the superintendent. We had this discussion at our last board meeting, and this directly, at this particular time, is really directed towards Mr. Silva, Mr. Ulrich, and myself. We really felt that we should have been part of the process, and our legal opinion was different at the time, and this would enable us to get a, a true ruling on that. So this would require a motion and a second tonight, and then we would put it to vote if indeed the board is willing to go forward with this.
Jean has a question.
Jean, Mr. Medio.
You're, you're saying that the discussion was about the three of you being conflicted out? I thought the discussion was about anybody who has a relative, whether or not they can be promoted.
What we're look...
Well, that, what, what you're talking about has been ruled on two or three times. Wrongly, I might add, but...
Mr. DeSanto.
Wrongly. First of all, the, the code that I quoted several times relating to the superintendent in, relative being able to be promoted applies to the board, too. Board members' relatives can be promoted, as long as they're existing, obviously they have to be existing employees. What this, the, the School Ethics Commission does not permit requests for opinion unless they're future requests. So what we had last time was a decision, or a, actually, an opinion by myself concurred with by school board's legal department, that the three board members who have spouses in the district could not vote on the promotion of Dr. Gruccio's daughter. These three board members felt that they should have been able to vote, and what I had said was, the only definitive way of getting an answer is to ask the, the School Ethics Commission that in the future, if Dr. Gruccio has another relative, then are these three board members conflicted? And that's what I submitted to all of you by email, the proposed question, because I wanted you to be able to make an informed decision. Is this the question that you want to authorize to be asked? And it has to do with, currently there are three of them. So, it really had nothing to do with board members' relatives because that's already been determined. If, if, if you had a relative that was seeking to be promoted, you know, the person could be considered. So this has...
And I, I think what I was really talking about was the future, not, it doesn't have to be Dr. Gruccio.
No, anyone.
It could be any superintendent.
And any board member.
And any board member, because the board is, is going through an election. It could be totally reorganized, and their dynamics change. So it wasn't specifically, right now, it's not specific to us, but can a board member's family member that, does that conflict us out? A board member, any board member that has somebody working in the district?
I had asked for the three of you or any future person similarly situated. That's what the request would be. Thank you.
I mean, realistically, I can't make that motion. I would need someone to make the motion.
Chair doesn't normally make the motion, but the three of you can, can vote. You're, you're allowed to ask for the opinion. That's not a conflict to ask for the opinion.
Absolutely. So realistically, we could have some conversation on it. If you agree, we can just, someone make the motion, we second it, and it goes to the vote. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't, and we, we move on to number 11. So the floor is yours.
So moved.
Somebody has to make a motion, right?
Yeah, he said, Jean moved.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabran?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes, and thank you to my colleagues.
Mr. English?
Yes, and my sentiments are the same as that. You as well, Bob. Thank you. Have at it, and bring us some good news, please.
Be submitted promptly.
Okay, thank you. At this time, do we have a motion for the approval of bills that occurred during July 2019 and August 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Mr. Sabran?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes. We do, we do not have any emergent items at this time. At this time, opportunity for the public to address the board on any topic. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Thank you. Please state your name when you come up as well.
Hello, my name is Luz Vasquez Guzman, parent of Laney Guzman, freshman at Vinland High School. I am certain by now you all have been made aware of my opposition to the mandatory LGBTQ curriculum law slated, slated to begin school year 2020. I have personally sent each one of you a copy of the letter that I sent to the New Jersey Department of Education Commissioner, the Governor, Senators, County Superintendent, and School District Leaders. While most of my efforts have been focused on mobilizing parents and leaders to send a clear message to Trenton that this law violates our rights as parents to present these matters of sexuality to our children through our religious perspective, it violates our rights by not allowing an opt-out option. It does not negate your responsibility as an elected board to represent every student in the district, not just a select group, to provide appropriate guidelines, to establish criteria, and acknowledge my concerns as a parent by continually monitoring how this district is planning to implement the LGBTQ curriculum. Tonight, I will conclude with this. These matters of sexualities are private and not public. It is possible to have high-quality education without systematically weaving sexuality into every aspect of our children's education. I trust this board will advocate for what is right for all the public students in the Vinland School District, not just the select few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez.
Good evening. My name is Randy London. It's come to my attention recently that we have a teacher in one of our schools that is taking a knee during the pledge of allegiance. I have a concern with that. I am a veteran. I served 20 years in the military, and that type of behavior offends me. I've risked my life hundreds of times to save people that I didn't know. I've stopped thousands and thousands of pounds of illegal drugs coming into this country, all for the flag and what this country stands for. Now, I'm not saying anyone needs... Now, I'm not saying anyone needs to agree with everything, but if that is this district's policy, then there should be no teacher, no teacher, taking a D during the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like you to provide feedback on your opinion. Is this part of the school's policy for teachers to set that type of an example? And, uh, see what we can do about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent, Mr. President, members. Um, I'm gonna piggyback off of what, uh, Randy just said.
Can you please just state your name?
Ron Macri.
Thank you.
Teachers are, are paid to educate our students. They're not paid to indoctrinate our students, our youth. What this woman is doing would be bad in any school, but because it's in the Dominic Pillas School, who gave his life for our military, is reprehensible. There are eleven-year-old children in that class. How, how much more impressionable can you be than an eleven-year-old? And I read the rules and regulations. The rules and regulations state that you cannot bring political agendas into the classroom. This is a political agenda. Let's, let's not just, you know, play games. Let's talk about the elephant in the room. It's a political agenda. She's a self-righteous social, social warrior, whatever you wanna call her. But this needs to stop. I mean, I've been in contact with some of you guys. I, I, I've talked to, uh, some other people, and I don't know if you think you can't do anything about this, but something needs to be done. I'm not gonna go away. And if nothing happens, next time, I'll have more people here. This, this can't happen. The indoctrination of our youth has to stop. Parenting happens in the home, not in schools. They're there to educate. And I respect them for what they do. Just educate. That's all. That's your job. Other than that, I mean, I don't, I, listen, I don't wanna see anybody get fired or, or suspended or anything. I just wanna see it stop. I was law enforcement for twenty-five years. When I went to roll call every morning, I had to stand at attention. I couldn't take a knee because I was working off of tax money, as she is. If I took a knee, I would be sent home, and progressive discipline would go from there. You're at work. This is your job. Do your job. If you wanna go somewhere else and be self-righteous, go somewhere else and be self-righteous. Not in our schools, not with eleven-year-old children that are very impressionable. I appreciate you listening to me, and, um, I hope something happens here, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Macri. Do we have anyone else this evening?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Greg Nordberg, and I'd like to talk about an event that happened on the twentieth of September at one of our local football games. There was an incident that happened that there's been no communication to, toward the parents, whether it was a drill or an actual event, but there was an active shooter situation at the Gattone Stadium. Now, I've had no communication from any of our teachers, our superintendents, or principals in reference to this subject. My children, both of them, which they are a part of the high school, were at the event, and they know that there was something that happened. Police were brought onto the scene, but yet, once again, there's been no communication to the parents. Now, it brings up the subject of, is there any type of policy for an event outside of the actual school for such an event should happen? Because I know there's fire drills. I know there's active shooter drills for the schools themselves. They're not necessarily in the handbook, and I understand for the reasons. But it is important for our children to be safe at these events off of school grounds. If there is not a drill, we need to impose one immediately. Because if there was something that happened on the twentieth, then we're already too late. Because we're looking at the cost of many lives, and the lack of communication towards the parents is unacceptable. Moving on past that, it's also important for us to have our safety of our children, not only at the games, of our home games, but away games. So it's not only this board's intention for the safety of our children, but to communicate this to the parents, but to other boards. So as our children go to an away game, we need to have policies that are gonna be very much uniform for each school so that this way, that school that we are going to has the same policy, and our children are as safe as they are at our own home games. So moving on to other safety issues when it comes to the school. You drive around, and it's getting to be apparent that, yes, unfortunately, things are changing, but safety bollards, which are nothing more than a concrete pole in front of stores, they're lacking around our school property. You look at Rossi's school, you look at how the buses line up in front of the school, it would not take nothing whatsoever but, uh, health issue for a school bus to drive straight into the middle of the school, and nothing would stop it. The aluminum doors, windows, glass, it would not stop it. We need to start implementing safety procedures to prohibit all these accidents that could happen that keep our children safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nordberg. Do we have anyone else this evening? Ronnie, you only get one shot at the podium, so, but I, I can tell you, I, I think we're gonna see you again, though. I can tell. Do we have anyone else this evening? And do we have any old or new business this evening? Seeing none, board member remarks. Mr. Fiocchi?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Costa? Ms. Spinelli? Mr. Medio?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Mr. Sabrana?
Let's see, five, ten, fifteen, twenty? Twenty, do I get all twenty-five? No, I could, I could never outdo you, Scott. Uh, congratulations to our, our flag saluters from Sabatera School. And on a, a much more serious note, I noticed with a great deal of sadness this week the passing of Janice Bader, who was a great educator in our district, a warm and friendly woman, and an awesome colleague. I was a brand-new communications coordinator in the district, a new position in nineteen ninety-five, and finding my way around a very large district, a lot of schools, and a whole lot of people. And I still remember with a great deal of pride how supportive and cooperative and helpful she was in me shaping the job that I had just taken. Our district has a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of people, and she was able to help me steer through that and really become effective in a very short period of time. She also had an amazing sense of humor that was infectious, and you couldn't not smile or laugh when you were around her. That's just the kind of person she was, and it really was a joy. I have a feeling there'll be a lot of laughs in heaven tonight because of the way that she was when she was alive. And I hope that's a bit of comfort to the people who must cope with her absence. And thinking about that this week, it, it brought to mind a couple of conversations that Dr. Gruccio and I have had lately about recognizing some of our longest-serving employees. And I, I wanted to start with the principals, um, and in particular, Dr. McCann, who served for twenty-five years as a principal. And moving forward, I'd like to help get that program started because I, I believe it's important for this Board of Education to recognize the people who built this district and do it when they can be here to accept a plaque and applause and the, and the love and caring of their friends and family and colleagues. On a much less serious note, just a reminder that November the fifth is the date of our general election, and that includes voting for the four seats to be decided on our school board here. Folks, please learn about the candidates seeking these seats. That's three three-year seats and one two-year seat, which is gonna represent a good portion of the board moving forward, as Mr. Ulrich said. And exercise your civic duty to get out there and vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Silva?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Ulrich?
Okay, that gives me about twenty minutes.
Five more there.
Just like to thank the, uh, parents that come up to express their, um, viewpoints. Uh, some of the things, um, we oftentimes, it's out of our control as far as, uh, mandated curriculums and, uh, unfunded mandates sometimes, where the state will come out and issue some mandate, but they don't provide any guidance for implementation, funding, uh, it's those unfunded mandates. So, um, you know, uh, sometimes we have to, um, the district has to, the administration has to implement a policy that goes to policy and personnel that we have to approve that is part of, uh, the Department of Education, State Department, uh, names change as we go. But a regulation that, um, you know, is often tied to compliance, but, uh, compliance and non-compliance, uh, can also be tied to withholding our, uh, annual aid payment. And, um, we've been threatened with that in the past. So I'm not saying that's the issue here, but I do hear you, um, you know, when you come forward and speak about, uh, issues and speak about views that, um, you know, maybe are directed at, uh, us, a, a group of students, but have really been, uh, set down by the state, and we're not gonna have too much individual control of that. And you're more than welcome to, you know, talk to our solicitor or Dr. Gruccio and, uh, get further information on that. Regarding the, um, the flag saluting and kneeling, um, coming from my background, uh, being in law enforcement and having no, um, recourse, but, you know, I didn't need that recourse because my father, uh, who was a, uh, in the military, taught me and my siblings, uh, to be respectful, to support our country. Um, I have a childhood picture where my dad has us lined up, saluting, um, the flag. And it's something that parents, uh, imparted on their children, a parenting function, to respect the men and women who have fallen and protected our freedoms. And I believe that a teacher, any teacher, doesn't have to be with eleven-year-old students. They should be there to follow the curriculum and to teach our students, whether it's mathematics, whether it's about, uh, the Holocaust, whether it's, uh, uh, poets, or whatever the case may be. They should not be imparting their own personal views, political, religious, anything, upon a student. If they don't want to, uh, salute the flag and stand up and not pledge the Pledge of Allegiance, you know, that's one thing. But I think to, um, impart their views on impressionable young children is also, I'll use your term, reprehensible. Uh, it sets a bad tone. These children, uh, if their parents want to educate them on social injustice or things that, uh, their views are, that's for the parents to do, not for our educators to, uh, pick a, uh, religious view, a political view, whatever the case may be. They should be there to educate our kids, to be good role models, and, uh, that, you know, mentors. Uh, I don't see that as mentoring myself personally. And Scott, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ulrich. Dr. Gruccio?
Thank you. Um, I just wanna reiterate what Tom said. My door is always open, first of all, and any of you are welcome to call or stop by, and I will address your concerns to the best of my ability. But please understand that sometimes our hands are tied due to state mandates and state, um, laws that are placed upon us as a school district, and we don't always have discretion as to what we must implement in the curriculum. So I, I just want you to understand that. It's not that we are opposed to what you're saying, or we agree or don't agree, but sometimes we're only able to do so much, so I hope that you would understand that. And again, you're always welcome to stop by or call with a question. Um, I just wanna take a moment to also reiterate or add upon what John said. Um, this past ten days, we lost two very wonderful people who were prior employees in our district. We lost Susan Beruza, at fifty-seven years old, a young person who was a beautiful person, a wonderful teacher, always bubbly and pleasant and made you smile. And we lost, um, Mrs. Bader, who was a supervisor, a helping teacher, a principal in our district as well. And they were both wonderful people, and I just ask that you please keep their families in your thoughts and prayers. They will be deeply missed, both of them, and, uh, I knew them both personally, and I'm very saddened, but, but thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Mr. Nordberg, Ms. Vasquez, Randy, and Ron. I don't see your faces often at the podium, so I know when you come to the podium, you're coming with substance. So, um, as Tom said, Dr. Gruccio said, there are rules out there. A lot of times, we don't like those rules, and sometimes we can, um, push a little bit, try and change things, which, um, we continue to do through the committee structure. Usually after our board meetings, when, um, the public speaks, I reach out to Dr. Gruccio, and we discuss each thing and, um, see what avenue we can work to, um, make that member of the public healthy. We're all parents here. We've done it. We've raised kids. We're still raising kids as well. And it's not like when we were in school. Safety is an all-time craziness right now. You know, just when you think you're tight, you, you know what happens. You always have to have eyes in the back of your head, and it's still not enough. I can tell you that, um, the board is committed to doing as much as possible within our statutes and laws. But at the same time, sometimes the member of the public doesn't like the answer that ends up being what we have to comply with. But, um, we did take notes, and we will, um, discuss tomorrow and, um, see what we can do and possibly what happened because there was a couple of things I wasn't aware of, so, um, you know, we will discuss that and move forward. I do have three other things this evening. I desp- I decided to speak, um, about three extremely different topics, but, um, they all share a common, um, denominator with the word called battle. First, we have, uh, the battle for school board elections, where we have nine total candidates. Six candidates are battling for three seats that carry a three-year term, while three other candidates are battling to fill a one, fill one seat for the next two years. I would like to wish each of you the best of luck on Election Day and thank each of you as well for having the courage to put yourself out there. This is not a position to hold, as we each know. It's a position that, when done properly, helps mold the future for our youth in the city. If you put the time and hard work in, trust me, good things do happen, as we do see through the graduations, through walking through them hallways and the Dr. Seuss days, et cetera. So when we hear the things at the podium, yes, they are the negatives, but we also have a lot of good things going on in this district. Second, we have a special, very special day here in New Jersey, which designates October third, tomorrow, and every year, as Sergeant Dominic Pillas and Corporal Jamie Smith Day. These two men, like so many others of our military veterans, battled and lost their lives fighting for and protecting what we sometimes take for granted, which is our freedom. I would like to thank Superintendent Dr. Gruccio, Sergeant Dominic Pillas Middle School Principal Bermudez, and Mayor Finucci for honoring their special day with various plans tomorrow. A lot of people were, um, picking up the phone and asking me, what's planned, what's planned? Sometimes you, you, you don't actually get the actual ceremonial thing that invites you to that event, but trust me, days like that, we do not let them pass without something happening. And, um, you will notice if you drive around tomorrow, how, where the flags will be, and you'll hear different things. I believe Ms. Marko is gonna try and stop in and see what's going on at the Pillas School, so, um, they definitely were not forgotten, and there are some things planned. So I thanked the three of those community leaders, um, for stepping up to the plate. And finally, um, October is here, and not only is it known as the month of Halloween, but it's also known- it's also known as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I wanted to thank my fellow board members that donned a little bit of pink this evening to support all of who have battled and continue to battle such a terrible disease. It doesn't matter if you are female or male, you can be diagnosed with breast cancer. Do the homework and understand the possible symptoms before it's too late. I lost a close friend, which seems like yesterday, but it's been a few years now, to this disease. I think of her often, her battle, what she left behind, and how her battle has raised the awareness for so many others. She was a wife, a mother, a sister, a daughter, an aunt, a cousin, and a friend. But most of all, she was a hero who battled to the end, and I honor her this evening by spreading the message of hope and awareness. Dr. Gruccio to my left, Mr. Ulrich to my right, know more than anyone about the battle with cancer, so never think it can't happen to you. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening, and good night. Do I have a motion for adjournment? All in favor? Thank you, and good night.